This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for September 17th, 2019. But to begin this evening, as with, as is the case with every scheduled Board of Education meeting, we offer the opportunity for public participation. This is an opportunity for any members of the public that are here in attendance to speak to the board. You may ask a question, you may make a comment, or you may have, uh, have a brief statement. We ask you to keep your comments to approximately three minutes or less. If you raise your hand and I will recognize you, please step to the podium and give us your name and address. So is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the board in public comment? Seeing that we have nice attendance this evening, but we have no one who wishes to speak at this point, we thank you and we will move on. A motion please to approve our agenda for the evening.
So move second.
Moved by Marvin, seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have minutes to approve this evening, the minutes from our September 3rd, 2019 meeting. A motion please?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Christina. This includes the minutes and the public hearing from that night, by the way. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. First item of business now, we do have a presentation this evening from the folks from Green Spark Energy with regard to a power purchase agreement. Lou, are you going to introduce our guest this evening, if you would? I turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for Administration, Mr. Lou Alimo.
Good evening. I'm pleased to introduce Matt Vanderbrook and Doug Weishauer tonight. They're representatives, business partners from Green Spark Energy. And one of the initiatives that we've been looking at as an environment committee over the last couple of years is investment in a, in solar renewable energy. So we've been working with, with Green Spark over these last couple of years and we've been kind of looking at the business opportunities for it. We've been hedging our bets a little bit, waiting for the best deal and waiting, and waiting out changes and rebates and incentives like this. And we're at a point now where we're ready to make a recommendation to the Board of Education. So I invited the pros here to, to provide a overview of the program, the business opportunity for the district, and just to entertain any questions before we bring it back to the Environment Committee and move forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, yeah, thanks for having us tonight. This is very exciting. As Lou said, we've been talking with the district for a couple of years now about this opportunity. So we're just gonna jump right in and give a little background on our company, and then we'll talk about the economic case and the benefits that can be presented to the school district. There we go. So first, Green Spark Solar. We are a Rochester area solar developer and installer. We are approaching our 18th year of business. So we've had a lot of success around the area and we'll show some of those examples, but, you know, we are a triple bottom line company. So we're a certified B corporation where we have a, you know, it's in our bylaws to focus on people, profit, and planet. And so we have a number of initiatives that we do internally to make sure, you know, that we're treating our employees right, that we're benefiting our community, and installing solar to benefit our environment. And I should throw out there that we were just named by B Labs, which is the independent verifying organization for B corporations, that we were named one of the best, best companies in the world. It's on our LinkedIn and blog, so feel free to check that out. And these are just, uh, just some examples of some of the customers that we have worked with in the same type of project. These are power purchase agreements, and Doug will kind of dive into how those work exactly. But we've worked with really a lot of the leading organizations in Rochester over the past few years. Rochester Regional Health, we've built two projects for. One is a five and a half megawatt project in the town of Parma. And that really offsets, you know, a large chunk of what their energy usage is from hospitals to some of their smaller offices. Heritage Christian Services, we've done a couple interesting projects with them where they're the anchor tenant in a community solar project, which is similar to what we're proposing here. And then last year, we just finished up a big project with RIT. So lots of exciting things that we've done locally. Most of our business is, is done locally here, so really one of the main drivers that we wanna, wanted to talk and work with, with the school district. Doug?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So I really wanted to dive right into specifically what we were offering here, and we'll have plenty of time for questions and answers, and feel free to stop me if I, if I don't thoroughly explain anything. But what we're proposing here for the, the school district would be to, to build a very large solar array. In this case, it's 6.7 megawatts of solar. And you would be what we would call the, the anchor tenant in that array. And so the anchor tenant can take up to 40% of the, of the credits that come, come from that array. And the, the rest of the subscribers to that array would be residential customers. And so there would be an opportunity for Town of Brighton residents to get involved if they wanted to be a subscriber to the community solar project, too. And so I know a lot of these terms and a lot of what we're talking about may be new to some of you, so I just wanted to kind of run down, you know, what a community solar project is, which I kind of just gave you a quick overview, what a power purchase agreement is, and then sort of why we're proposing this, this solution. And so first and foremost, a power purchase agreement is an excellent way to get involved with a solar project with a, with a very limited level of risk and literally no investment. Excuse me. So this, this, uh, this type of arrangement is not an ownership model. So a third party, a bank that we work with, will own the solar array, they'll be responsible for insuring it, maintaining it, taking care of basically everything to do with that solar array. All the, the school district would be agreeing to would be to purchasing their portion of the power at preset prices. And so we gave you a couple of options that we'll get to on the next page, but basically it's a, right out of the gate, save 10% or save 20% off of the, off of the PPA price. Go ahead.
I was just gonna mention, so this project is also, we're not looking to put a system on Brighton School District property or on the roof. This is a completely off-site system. So we mentioned the Rochester Regional Health. That is on a piece of property that is owned by a farmer in the town of Parma, and we lease the land from that farmer. And Rochester Regional Health just has signed up to purchase the electricity from the system and receive it. So there's no sort of, the question always comes up with school districts especially, like, what's this gonna do to our roof? Is this gonna void our warranty?
Yeah.
This sort of removes that as a, as a concern.
Excellent point. Excellent point. And one other thing I wanted to point out, and we're gonna get into the numbers here on the next slide, but another thing that people commonly ask when they're sort of trying to think through what a power purchase agreement means to them, and they say, well, I don't, you know, I only pay this much for my power, and your power purchase agreement's a different price. The, the way power purchase agreements and the credits work in the state of New York, it doesn't matter what you pay. What matters to you is what you're paying for each credit. And like I said, we're offering, you know, 10 or 20% discounts off of what the credit values are. And so... So again, just to reiterate on the, on what the PPA looks like, no capital investment. You get immediate savings right, you know, right as soon as your system goes on, predictable costs. We will give you, it's a 20-year agreement, and so we will give you the price, what it would be every year for each of those 20 years. So there's no, there's no production risks, there's no performance risks. If the, if the system, if we install it wrong and it doesn't make any power, you don't have anything to buy. So there's really no, there's really no risk there at all on that front. And there's, you know, there's a lot of opportunities for the school district and the, and the different schools for ongoing community education, community participation, and just being able to say that you're part of the clean energy movement, which, you know, is desperately needed, and it's needed at much higher levels than we're currently getting in terms of participation. Okay. So, the nitty-gritty, the numbers, if you will. So we have two options here, and they're basically the same option, and they're looking at two different ways to structure your pricing. So you have your starting price, and then your price goes up by a small percentage, 1% or 2% in these cases, each year. Okay? And so by opting for a little bit higher of what they call the escalator, the amount it goes up each year, you're allowed a little bit lower starting rate for electricity. So if you opt for a, for a 2% annual price escalation, and again, we're talking fractions of a penny, the starting rate is 7.9 cents. So fractions of a penny increases each year, but that would be held against each credit that you earn at 10 cents. So in this, in the first line, you're seeing, you're paying 7.9 cents for the solar power. That solar power provides you with a credit equal to 10 cents, 20% discounted by, by producing your energy from a, from a clean and renewable source. What that means to you in option number one, year one, net savings, $63,000. Okay? If you, if you wanted to go with a slightly more conservative option, option two, the price starts a little bit higher, so it's 8.9 cents, again, against a 10-cent credit, and you're gonna look at $33,000 in annual savings. Again, this was no investment, no ongoing cost, no insurance, no maintenance, none of that. Just buying the power gets you the ability to get the, the credit rewards for what they call the value stack, which is how they value the clean energy that we're putting out on the grid right now.
Yeah, and I think maybe it's just important to mention, the reason that this credit is the way it is, New York State's really making a push, Governor Cuomo's really making a push to support the deployment of solar. And specifically, in April, the state put out an order saying, "We want to encourage community solar development, and so we're going to provide an additional credit to these anchor tenants that never existed before." So that's sort of one of the big reasons that we came back to Lou and said, "Hey, this is, this is a new opportunity that we should explore that, that wasn't available before."
And so just, just to wrap up that summary, what, what those both mean, if you look at that, what your savings looks like over time, over the 20-year term of the power purchase agreement, with option number one, you're looking at about $1.1 million in total savings back to the district. With option number two, you're just under a million, you're at $940,000. So pretty significant numbers. Again, when you're thinking about doing this where there's very, very limited risk and there's no investment required, it offers a pretty healthy return back to you, and it obviously has pretty significant impacts in terms of what we're able to do here locally to help combat climate change and start producing energy from a renewable source. So just a quick graphical representation of what that looks like. The, the blue line on top there is what the, the value of your solar credit will look like over the course of the, the term of the agreement, and then the green line on the bottom is what your, your rate is. You could say, it's hard to see in that picture, it catches up a little bit at the very tail end of this, where they're getting a little closer together, but you're always saving money, right? And, and your, your, your biggest savings really come in the, in the first, first half of that.
And so this is just, you know, we recognize that the environmental impact is, is very important with these projects, and so this is just a calculation of basically what the impact of the new solar system would be per year. It's the equivalent of reducing the carbon emissions from 444 homes. And this is just in one year, or the greenhouse gas emissions from 6.2 million miles of, of driving an average passenger vehicle. So it's a, it's a massive impact, especially at this scale. I mean, we're talking about projects that are ultimately about 15 to 20 acres of, of solar panels. So it is not a, it is not a small project. And so this is, Doug sort of alluded to it, you know, we, we've done more community solar projects than, than anyone else in Rochester Gas and Electric. We serve, we serve about somewhere around seven, six or 700 different customers that are residential customers who can't put solar on their home, and so they sign up to join in one of these solar arrays. So one of the things that we've explored and something that we, we want to do with the school district is sort of open up spots available to, to members of, of the school district, sort of provide some other, you know, incentive or some kind of marketing program to reach out to members of the district and try to get them to sign up and get the benefits, which would amount to, you know, roughly about 10% savings on their electric bill, too. So we've done a, we've done a number of these projects, sort of can walk through the process with anyone, but could be a really great opportunity to incorporate the Brighton school community in the project as well. And this is just a, a quick list of some of this stuff. We've, you know, we've been here for a long time, probably for the last six or seven years, we've been doing a lot of projects in Brighton, specifically with Color Bright and Green. We've, we've worked with them on a number of different initiatives and always participate in their eco fair. We've done another, some different projects with the school district. So Brighton is really, you know, I think it's probably one of our best markets for customers. I think we probably have more customers here between our residential arrays and our community solar arrays than anywhere else. So it just, it makes a lot of sense that we would, you know, potentially do some work with, with the school district as well.
So this says thank you, but we're not done. I'm sure there's a few questions out there. We're not gonna, we're not gonna leave you hanging. So we wanted to open up the floor for any questions that we can address for you.
Yeah, I've got two of them. Where will these solar panels be located?
That has not yet been determined. So we're developing projects all across the RG&E territory. Most often, they're, they're more in rural locations because it's, there's more land accessible to use. So we have a number of, a number of projects under development. It depends on when you sign up to determine which one you would get assigned to.
And, and the savings you mentioned, is that compared to RG&E rates? Is that what that is?
Nope. The, all the savings that is, that is included in this analysis is the rate you pay for the solar power against the credit RG&E gives you for the solar power. So 7.9 or 8.9 cents, depending on which option you pick, against a 10-cent credit that they're issuing. And so the way those credits work is they're dollars, right? So there's been a number of different iterations of the way that solar credits work, and some were in kilowatt hours and some were in dollars, but these are in dollars. They come right to your RG&E bill as a, as a negative dollar amount, and you can apply them to one bill, you can apply them to 300 bills. And you can constantly change if you need to, you know, if one building usage goes down, another goes up, you want to allocate more credits to a different account, you can do that anytime you need to.
The, you mentioned the incentives from New York State. Are there federal incentives involved in the program that you guys are involved with, too?
Yes.
What, the way that those, and there's a lot more detail to this, and we'll, we'll obviously be discussing this over some period of time.
Sure.
What guarantees are there behind both the federal and the state in terms of the duration of a contract that we would be entering in?
So the, the contract that you would be entering in, the only, the only thing that would matter for your purposes would be the contract you get with RG&E.
Okay.
For that, for that 10-cent credit.
I see.
And that, that is a 20-year term when you sign that contract. So you'll get a contract directly from the utility company for it to participate in that program and to be issued those credits. The rest of the incentives, in this case, would go to the system owner or the financing company.
Allow the system to be built?
Correct.
Under current, okay. And, and when you mentioned Brighton customers, residential customers, I think, are the majority of those individual installations on their property, or are...
It's a, it's, it's a pretty balanced mix. Like I said, we have a lot of community solar subscribers.
Right.
We have a, I mean, I think the number we put in there is probably around 100 between the two.
Right.
Also home, you know, residential systems we have installed throughout the town.
Okay. And these homes that were not part of their own individual system, they're part of another arrangement similar to this?
Exactly, yeah.
That previously existed?
So we have, like I said, we have about six operational of, of these types of projects. A couple are at our office, one's in Parma, one's out in, in Wolkett. So they're all participants in, in those arrays already.
Okay. And the amount of energy that we're talking about, how much of that is, what percentage of our total energy consumption are we talking about under this?
Yeah, so we, in there, we have about 3 million kilowatt hours, and I think, as I recall, you were around 10 million?
It sounds right, yeah.
But I would have to verify that.
Roughly 30%.
30%-ish of our total usage.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, not to, not to go too far down the road, but there are, you know, if this was successful and the school district wanted to do more, you can do, and there's nothing that prevents you from doing more.
Okay.
I mean, Rochester Regional Health, we're talking about doing additional projects for them as well. So this is sort of a good, this is a starting point.
And the other, the last thing out for now, again, because we'll have a lot more conversation. You're well aware, I'm sure, of Brighton's efforts on community choice aggregation plans.
Yes.
And, and working with three other municipalities.
Yep.
They've assigned a, I believe they've chosen a, an administrator.
Yep.
How would what you're offering fit with that? Is it entirely a separate system? And if we chose to go down that path, or individuals did, it would be for the remaining of our power use?
Yes. So the, doing so, the solar and community choice aggregation are two...
Completely separate.
Completely separate things. But participating in one does not preclude you from the other or impact. So if you're, if you're generating dollar credits on your bill from a solar array, you can still choose your energy supplier.
Sure.
Whoever's gonna give you the lowest rate, so you need less credits to, you know, to offset that bill.
So your 30% impact might jump up to 40 or 50%.
Depending on what, yeah, depending on what rate you're getting from doing the community choice aggregation.
You, you and your business could be part separately of another supply to an aggregator type arrangement, too, down the road as possible, right?
We're not actually seeing that as much as we would like, but it's, it's coming.
Yeah.
It's coming to New York State real fast. The policy is already in place, so I think we'll see a lot more of that over the next couple of years.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you coming today, and I know that, you know, we know as a board that you've been talking with Lou and a lot of the groups within the school district and within the community for quite a long period of time, and we look forward to really getting a little bit more detail as a group with the administration on it and, and looking at it moving forward at some point, so.
Great, great. Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And then next up, I guess, Lou, are you going to introduce? We, we have a construction management report with, from our campus construction folks?
Yes. Good evening. So today we have...
Need no introduction, but Lou will introduce them to us again anyway.
So we have our two project managers, John Limbeck and Eric Haney. John's overseeing the work at the high school and middle school, as well as the French Road scope that's, that's occurred so far. And then in the back, we have Gary Huffman, our project executive oversees the, the entire project. Eric is specifically assigned to Council Rock, so he's been working on that. Tonight's presentation, we've, Dan Goldman has done an excellent job of informing the community about the work that has occurred over the summer and what we were able to achieve by the start of school. The project managers are gonna talk to where we are right now and what's, what's to be expected during the course of the school year, and then certainly provide a, a financial overview, and specifically change orders, which is part of the board's fiduciary responsibility to oversee project status and change orders. So they'll touch on some of the areas that have required change orders or that are likely to lead to change orders in the upcoming months. So I'll turn it over to the team. Thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Good evening. The first thing I'd like to do tonight, I have to apologize to the building principals. We violated the back row seating. And we won't do that again, but thank you for your kindness.
Long as you learned your lesson, we're all good. No problem.
As Lou said, we're here tonight to talk about what's gonna be happening going forward. I know most of you were on the tour August 1st, when we looked at the different sites to see how the summer work was ongoing. And tonight, we'll just give you a little bit of an overview of what's happening at each school. All right, Lou, where do I have to press? Say what? At the 12 Corners Middle School, we're going, finishing up the adapted, adapted PE room 100 down in the basement. That room has significant structural steel activity going on to reinforce the building, put in the improvements that we need to put in. We have a maintenance room also down in the basement, 118, that's gonna be upgraded, and we're gonna be replacing all of the handrails and stair towers four and five at the middle school. At the high school, the auditorium renovations are ongoing. We're to the point where we're at our last bit of asbestos abatement in the auditorium. We'll be able to open that up then, give everybody a look at what it looks like, right down to the skeleton. Down in the basement of the high school, we've got the trainer room. Right now, that's going to have a new masonry wall with several doors installed. That's where all of the new electrical service for the high school is gonna be installed. Coming up on the September 30th and October 1st holidays, we'll have a crane out front, and we're gonna be lifting the new air, rooftop air handling unit for the auditorium up onto the roof. We finally got the crawl space abated, and the flowable fill was placed down there, so the dirt floor is now encapsulated. And that's where we'll be running the 14, or the 11 new four-inch conduits that are gonna be feeding the electrical service for the building. We have a boiler room, electrical upgrades in the basement of the high school, and we're also gonna be working on bathroom renovations where there's no asbestos abatement. Any of the ones requiring asbestos abatement will happen next summer.
So over at Council Rock Primary School, you know, the main, main focus of this project is the two additions, the north addition and the south addition. So over the, the next several months, that's gonna be really our, our main priority. Get those, continue to work on those for swing space throughout the school. So the south addition, where most of the work is happening right now, we'll continue to work on getting that addition, what we call watertight. This will allow us to basically complete more mechanical roughing to feed the air conditioning and heating throughout, throughout the addition. The boiler room and the mechanical room that is in that south addition is really what we like to call the new heart of the building. Again, that feeds all the mechanicals through the, through the additions, as well as the existing building. Over the next few months, on a holiday break, we'll also be installing a new electrical service through the back of the building. And then obviously later down in a few months, we'll be, start working on finishes in the south addition. And then the north addition, if any of you have been over there, we just started actually digging and excavating for footers and foundations, and we'll be falling behind with mechanicals and, and concrete floors, and you'll start to see the shell of the building begin to be erected. So that's where we're at, Council Rock.
Phase two, the work at the middle school and the high school, potential costs over $50,000. Most of the higher cost change orders we've got on phase two are the result of the district's determination to completely abate all of the asbestos in that room. So the auditorium side stud and drywall has a potential to be $90,000. And again, once we get all of the asbestos out of there, that design will be finalized, and then we'll get the final price on that. The change orders over 50,000 that we have so far for our general contractor, the auditorium ceiling abatement was $75,000, and the auditorium wall abatement was $95,000. And we had an additional, we actually revised the entire auditorium lighting package, and after we got a credit and reviewed and reworked the lighting, $63,655. And again, a lot of that cost came in because we're gonna have a cloud ceiling now, and the lighting gets all interspersed between those different layers of the ceiling. So that's where that came up.
So similar to phase two, potential costs over $50,000 over at Council Rock Primary School. The B wing wall tile abatement, we abated all the wall tile down to the floor to make it, you know, more safe for the students. So we did that. That has the potential to be $86,406. Unsuitable soil, so this is when you're excavating for those footers and foundations. If you come across anything from, could be tires, anything in, in the ground really that causes your building not to be structurally sound down the road, we like to dig those out. And we've had to do that in the back with Nardozzi Contractors, so that has the potential to be $84,000. And then part B modified ductwork and rerouting of hot and chilled piping. Inside the existing building, it's, it's a very crowded space, so the new mechanical systems are basically very crowded through the existing building. So in order to, to make space, we had to reroute those through classrooms. So that has the, the possibility of being $50,000. And change orders that are over $50,000. Alternate EC2 was awarded to Hewitt Young Electric after the bid, and this was basically the data package throughout the school. It made more sense to award this to them since they're the electrical contractor on site. And then additional electrical requirements through the building, $61,500. This is for various lighting packages, electrical service, and things of that nature that needed to be added.
Additionally to phase two, you'll remember, we took French Road out of the phase two package to help protect the bid. We have the revised drawings for that, and we're putting together the contract package right now with the intent of bidding that in the October timeframe. And similarly, we had approval from New York State Education Department for the administration building ventilation project. And that sat at SCD for quite a while, but we're putting together a package to that and looking to get that out on the street this fall as well. For the phase two, what we did is, for the overall project, we split the contingency budget between the two projects, and for phase two, we had $1.277 million. We've got to date $255,478 in approved change orders, and we have potential for $561,000. Some of these will become change orders, and again, some of these are placeholders until we get the final pricing. So based on what we've got so far, actual and projected, we still have $460,000 left in contingency for phase two.
Over at Council Rock, it's just like phase two, so we started with roughly $1.9 million in contingency. In approved change orders, we are at $441,669, with a pending estimate of upcoming possible change orders of $816,000, which leaves us with a, a project remaining contingency of $658,000.
And that concludes our presentation. Of course, if you have questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Does anybody have a question, or anything of the, the folks? I guess, thank you for coming. I mean, we're, I don't know of any questions that come off the bat to us. We've had the material provided to us previously. We've also been kept apprised of the change orders, you know, the system that we have internally on change orders. I guess what we would express from the board is thank you for staying on top of things on a daily, hourly basis. Thank you for keeping us posted, working with, you know, with Lou and Larry Davis, of course, our representative from the board to, to the, to the committee. And I would remind the public who might, you know, see our report online or be watching the meeting tonight, that the projects that we're talking about are large, major projects over a long period of time. They are anticipated always to run into things. You mentioned unsuitable soils. Certainly, we know until we open up things, sometimes asbestos is where it was supposed to be, and on drawings, and other times it isn't. The other thing that we also, and I, I think you mentioned it in one of the items that you highlighted, we've also prudently taken the opportunity, as things change or as we find things, to take advantage, using a particular contractor or a particular situation, to go ahead with work that maybe we planned down the road, to add it now and take advantage of some cost savings there. And so, we appreciate you continuing to point those out to us, and we would anticipate approving all of the current change orders and any updates from Lou in an agenda item at our next meeting, actually. But everything looks like it should at this point in time. We appreciate all of our principals and everybody in our buildings. I know when we toured in August, it was hard to imagine those three buildings that we toured being ready to go, but they were, and we opened, and, but there's construction going on, and we know that, and everybody, we continue to ask everybody's patience, and the students at Council Rock are seeing and learning a lot, in addition to their classroom lessons. But, but thank you for riding herd and staying attuned and, and keeping us posted on what's going on, so.
And similarly, the support we've gotten from the district at all levels has been phenomenal, and that's much, that's greatly appreciated.
We're happy to hear that, and that's, as it should be, so thank you so much.
I just want to extend my gratitude to the campus team for the start of school. I mean, we obviously have some hiccups that we're still working through, but typically, this district does less than a million dollars of construction on, on, over a summer. We completed close to probably $10 million worth of construction work this summer. And, you know, the first day of school, despite a couple of glitches, it was a really successful opening of school, and I can't thank the team enough for just rolling up their sleeves. Gary Huffman, our project executive, was cleaning our kitchen Labor Day weekend, so it was, you know, they took great pride in making sure that our kids came back to school to a safe, clean environment. So just my gratitude to the entire team, so, thank you.
You're right, Lou, and, you know, Julina and I actually had the opportunity, we had our agenda meeting with Kevin at Council Rock the other day, and had toured as it is right now, you know, it's, it's the first time we had been in there since the summer, and really, where it is right now for students, and the, the remade auditorium, the cafeteria that's in there, and that space that's being used, and the progress that's been made in the new construction over there is really quite incredible. And we understand, you know, parents and neighbors and our teaching staff, it's, it's a construction site, and we're asking everybody to kind of be patient with, with the entirety of the situation, but it is moving along, and it's great to see progress being made, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Lou.
Thank you to Principal Tappin for keeping our kids safe and worrying about every little thing every single day.
He's going into construction management, did you know that? When this is all done, he's decided that that's his, maybe his calling, or maybe he's running from that, I'm not quite sure.
He's got a whole new career ahead of him.
We should be filming, what's that, Bob the Builder show, is that still on? We should be filming that over there. All right, next up, we have a motion, please, to approve, and then we'll have, we'll have Lou again for a moment, but a motion to approve our budget guidelines and calendar for the upcoming year. Thank you, gentlemen.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Julina and seconded by Karen. This is the time of the year that we do formally approve our budget guidelines for the year, the budget development and activity calendar. Lou, do you have anything to add to the process? It's pretty straightforward, and, you know, basically how and why we're going to go. You have a couple of slides if you want to present those?
Yeah, no, this is, I'm just pitching in for, from the superintendent. I don't see him up here, but essentially, the slides were, just reflected the calendar, the timeline that's prescribed by the state with the, the statewide vote, and the budget guidelines reflecting our blueprint priorities. One of the change in the guidelines this year, based on the results last year, we used to say evaluate the impact of the tax cap on the long-term planning, short and long-term planning. This year, we made the recommendation that we're starting the budget process with the, the goal of complying with the New York State tax cap. So that's a significant change from the prior year, just specific to the guidelines.
Right. Okay, thank you, Lou, for your input on that. And again, it's pretty self-explanatory, the way we, excuse me, the way we've seen it, the calendar that you see leads us right up through the May budget vote. So lots more to come on that, but this is, sets the process, the process is already in motion. This formalizes the process in a way that we're required to do. Does anyone have any further questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll have our principal reports this evening, and we're going to start off with Council Rock and Matt Tappin. We hear there's construction.
Well, what are you talking about? I know, no such thing. So, welcome back. It has been a great start. I too want to just echo my thanks to the construction team, to Lou, and especially to our buildings and grounds folks, John Novelli and his entire crew, because they worked all hours to make sure we were ready as well, and they have been continuing to work all hours to support teachers and things that have popped up that we didn't know about or we didn't anticipate that needed to be taken care of. So I continue to thank them as we move forward. So our curriculum nights are coming up. A couple of changes that are having to be made, so families will start in their classrooms, and I've communicated this, but I want to say it one more time. Normally, you start in the auditorium with me. I don't know if you know, we have construction going on at Council Rock, and there is no auditorium. We have our cafeteria, but it's not an ideal space to present to a large, large, large group like that. So a video will be shown that Eric Gruner, our very talented and wonderful videographer, created with my team, Dr. McGowan, Mrs. Jeffries, our PTSA, and all of our special area teachers. So we replicated what usually happens in the auditorium, and that will happen in the classroom. The teachers will be able to do an introduction and then hit play. And because of that non, the, the lack of transitions, we've made the night go from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, so it won't go until 8:30. So I'm sure parents will be very disappointed to have that extra half hour back, but we will be able to accomplish what we did accomplish in that hour from 7:00 to 8:00. So again, starting, PTSA will be there selling calendars and other spiritware, greeting people, all of our special area people will be there to greet people in person, although they won't be presenting, just to put a face with a, with a name, and then they will head right to the classrooms from 7:00 to 8:00. Kindergarten is tomorrow night, first grade is Thursday night, and then the following Wednesday is second grade, so we hope to see all of our families there. We had a really successful start to the school year. Credit to Dan Goldman for all these awesome pictures that he took the first day. Our bus loop is quite changed from what it was, and even since the first day, we've changed and have barricades up along, so really, we've just been looking out for how do we make this safe, but kids don't know the difference. The kids are really flexible and doing a great job, so it was a super successful start. Most of our classrooms are spending these first couple of weeks really getting to know their kids, getting to know one another, so these are just a different, all different varieties of getting to know our students all about me, our school years, what they like about themselves, so really a focus on that. And then I've noticed, across the building, a community building focus on greetings and goodbyes, so offering a hug, a high five, a fist bump, a handshake, or a wave, and lots of teachers have that, and they get to choose which one they have as they come in, so, or as they leave, and it's great to watch all the kids being greeted by our teachers. So construction continues and flexibility is key. So our teachers and our students, and Mrs. Jeffries and I have had to be very flexible. A lot of procedures had to change, so we appreciate all of our parents being flexible and patient. Our teachers, there are certain things we've had to change on the spot because things weren't working. So this is just a picture of one of those times, so we have two buses that drop off early. Typically, they go to our auditor, or to our cafeteria, and we have two teaching assistants who watch them there. Well, the only place we have for our staff breakfast on Fridays is the cafeteria, so on Friday, every other Friday, they relocate to the gym. So this is just a picture of them doing a community building circle in the gym and being flexible, so we just thought it was a really good, on-the-spot example of how we change on a dime, and that is happening all over Council Rock, so. Lots of people are taking advantage of the construction. I talked last year about how people were using it as a teaching opportunity, I continue to see that, although the kids aren't quite as impressed as they were when it first started. Our kindergartners are, but our first and second graders are kind of in it. But lots of teachers have taken on the construction theme for their classroom for the year, so you can see that. The other thing that's great is, an unexpected that happened was the abating of more tile than we thought. So we now have a lot of drywall that was put up. It was painted beautiful yellow, but because it's not going to last forever, our teachers have been able to paint right on it, and they're being so creative with what it looks like. So it was bright and yellow when we started the year, but you can see kids' handprints kind of all over, and they are just designing and adding color and making it really homey, and the kids are having a part in it, which we haven't always done. Kids have always had a part, but this really has been, they've been able to put their own stamp on, on their classrooms, so it is exciting. And these are just some views. I don't know where Kevin Geisel got these, I'm not sure if he has a drone or how he got them, but he sent them to me, so they are, you know, eagle eye views of the construction. So this is existing, and this is existing. This is the new courtyard that will be there. This is all brand-new wing, and this is all brand-new wing. You can...
The type that goes across the back wasn't even there.
The part that goes from, so where I am, from here, this was the old main office, and this was wall. This was right where the Rainbow Playground was, so this is all brand-new, and this is all brand-new.
The person you just...
Yep.
Right there.
Yep.
That wasn't even there when we were there in August.
Correct, correct. Yes, absolutely. So, and we've got roof on here, and the floor was poured yesterday, so truly, day by day, things are changing as quickly as I can keep up with them. So really exciting things, and they're about to start, I think, next week, pouring the foundation in the front of the building for our new cafeteria and for our new office space, so it's all starting to take shape. I know there's a long way left to go, but it's all starting to take shape, so. Upcoming events, I mentioned the curriculum nights. Monday, the 30th, and Tuesday, October 1st, we're closed for Rosh Hashanah. Monday and Tuesday, the 7th and 8th of October are our school picture days. Parents should find out which day, so you only go one of those days, which day their pictures will be taken. Wednesday will be Yom Kippur, so we'll be closed for Yom Kippur. And then Friday, we have our superintendent's conference day, so that one week is a little choppy in there, but, and then Monday closed for Columbus Day. But otherwise, just a really great start, and thanks to the board for all your continued support.
Thanks for touring last week, it was fun.
Yeah, thanks again, Matt, and I guess also, the one thing that strikes me is, when you talked about the events and being flexible, right, that's the word of...
It's the word of the year.
...the next two years, but I think also, thanks to you and Marin and the entire staff and all of our teachers, to make sure that the experiences that those kids that are in Council Rock had last year, this year, next year, all of these activities are getting fit in somehow. You're going to make it work and make it unique to them, and they're going to have stories to tell forever, but, but making the experience valid and valuable, and, and they will not miss a thing, and they will have some enhancements that no other classes have ever had. So thank you so much for being able to make that work, and things like curriculum night and then the open houses later, they still can work, they'll just be a little bit different, so.
Awesome, well, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, Allison in French Road Elementary School.
Hello.
Hello.
I was laughing because this looks very similar to Matt's minus the construction, so a lot of similarities, even in how we designed our slides tonight, but we had a great start to our school year. So some pictures also from Dan, thank you, Dan Goldman, for sharing them. Our third graders are happy to be here with us, and not because we have a playground, for lots of other reasons too, but that adds to it. They're saying, wow, there's two playgrounds here, so that doesn't hurt. But they had a really great start, it's been smooth, the kids are happy, and, you know, it's hard to believe that they didn't know where they were going just a short time ago. We had our PTSA back-to-school picnic just Friday night, we had a great turnout, we had a food truck, families and parents just coming and hanging out with each other and spending some time together at French Road, enjoying the first full week of school. And I'll highlight a lot of things going around, on around the school, around team building and connections. This is a picture of Mr. Koch's third grade class, they were practicing teamwork on one of the first days of school. They had to get to a certain point in the yard by, at the same exact time, so they had to figure out, make a plan for the best way to do it, and they had to do it over and over till they figured out how to work as a team to get from point A to point B. Some of our fourth graders in Mrs. Aiello's class, working on some STEM activities to connect and learn about each other at the start of the school year. She gave them a lot of different, random kind of objects that they could pick, and they had to create the longest line possible in the shortest amount of time, and see which group got there and how they did it, and what kind of things they used, and great way to get to know each other and jump right in working together. And then, every year, our fourth graders are just, the, the best place you could walk into at the beginning of the year, I think, is instrumental music and watching our fourth graders trying out all of the instruments. So here's a few of our fourth grade friends trying out some instruments, and they're still finishing that up, and probably within the next, maybe two weeks, everyone will know what instrument they're playing, and will be able to start getting some lessons in, but the kids couldn't be more excited to finally be here enjoying this time. In PE class, we had, this is Mrs. Forsites, Forsites' class, they were doing coding in PE by doing human robots, so one person would, had to assign some code and code some PE movements, and they had to get the other person to move around, and it was a cute way to connect and learn about each other. Ms. Maz's fifth grade class jumped into seesaw, which is where we're kind of focusing for K through 5 this year for parent and family communication, and she decided to have the kids get comfortable with seesaw by having them do a seesaw scavenger hunt, and they had to take pictures of different things around their classroom to share with their families, to tell a little bit about fifth grade. Mrs. Shank's kids highlighting the star qualities that they learned about the first week of school, so some of our new third graders. And in art class, we jumped right in with painting for our third graders, we have fifth graders starting their "How I See Myself" quote projects, where they create their eyes and write a quote about themselves underneath and work on that. And all around our school, we have community building circles going on, which is fantastic. So highlighted here is Crystal Forsites' PE class and Cory Gottfried's fifth grade class, two very different types of circles, but getting-to-know-you circles for kids. I think that, you know, more and more teachers, after our professional development this summer, have taken on trying this in their classrooms, and it's our goal as a school for everyone to try at least a few circles within their classroom on the community building level throughout the school year. And just tonight, in Ms. Maz and Mr. Simmons' classes, we had our curriculum night for fifth grade, there were two circles going on with families. So as I was walking around, I thought, this is great, I was so excited, but I couldn't interrupt because you shouldn't do that in a circle, but it was really exciting to see families engaged in that, on our curriculum night. We also have two new friends at French Road that are of the dog breed. We have Charlie Sando, who is one of our therapy dogs, and Oliver Lanza Faim, so who, Oliver is, owner is Christina Lanza Faim, fourth grade teacher, and Charlie is our school psychologist, Rachel Sando's dog. They have definitely brightened up the hallways at Fraz and the classrooms, and Charlie's out on the bus loop every day, greeting kids as they walk in, just sitting there just like that with his duck every day.
And grandparent is? I mean, I'm not sure the protocol, but grandparent is...
Grandparent, everyone. He is pretty awesome, so. Today, I was just working, and he just walks in and sits right next to you, and he's very comfortable in the main office, so that, it's great to have him around, the kids have enjoyed him. Upcoming events, tonight we had, as I mentioned, our fifth grade curriculum night, and next week, on the 26th, we have third, fourth, and special area. We have started to offer childcare on both of our curriculum nights. Tonight, we had a great turnout for fifth grade, we had maybe 10 or 12 Brighton High School students that were there with about 20-ish French Road fifth graders or siblings, and we have an even larger amount predicted to come next week for our third, fourth, and special area curriculum night, so that was really great. Families were appreciative and use it, so if you are watching this and you need that childcare next week, just let us know. We have a meeting with the principal tomorrow night at 7:00 PM in the cafeteria, Fraz 101. School pictures are coming... School pictures are coming up. Lots of days of no school with Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur and superintendent's conference day and Columbus Day. We will have a movie night coming up on October 10th, which is the day we have school in between two days off, so it's kind of like a second Friday of the week, and we're hoping we'll get a good turnout for that. And then we jump into roller skating soon. So, that's FRES's start of the year in a nutshell. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Allison. We appreciate it. Next up, we'll hear from 12th Quarters Middle School, Rob.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. It's exciting to get the staff together the first day before school begins and get our staff photo. What started as the first time about seven or eight years ago is now a big tradition at our middle school. But if there was a thought bubble over their heads, it would say, Rob, finish with the picture already. We've got to get to our classroom and get ready for tomorrow. But they endure it, and it's a great thing for me to see and to have in our main office. We also, of course, welcome back the kids, and Stacy Kugel is leading our TCMS Strong Mentors in a summer program for our sixth graders who are new to the building and new seventh and eighth graders who've moved into the district. Our TCMS Strong kids even marched in the homecoming parade. The students do a marvelous job of welcoming our new students and then mentoring them throughout the year during our 10th-period win period at the end of the day. And our PTSA was very active and helpful throughout the end of August, selling calendars and helping especially with locks and locker assignments in the atrium, a number of days before opening week, and also the first morning of the, of school, where many students come in a little panicked about where their locker is and how to work it, and these parents were a big, big help, thanks to all the PTSA members. Our opening day pep rally almost made it on opening day this year. Last year, we had to delay it two days. This year, we were able to get out there the second day, where the entire school went into the high school stadium for some cheers, for some fun, some enlightening words from Dr. McGowan. And the one report I had was from a neighbor near Brighton High School that said they could hear me on the microphone, and it was a bit annoying. That neighbor was my daughter. So, other than that, it went, it went very well, and it's, it was a beautiful, beautiful morning to see the kids out there and getting excited about their return. And we have a lot returning. 901 students, broken down about 300 per grade level, plus or minus, as you look at the numbers here, and 43 students new to Brighton schools. And we're being very precise in the way that we welcome each one of those families. Our counselors and administrators call all the new families within the first two weeks of school, and we do a lot with the kids, checking them in with, with the counselors and the teachers. Our kids are very active, too, joining a lot of the groups that are in, during the school day with band chorus and orchestra, which didn't quite fit the right spot in the screen here. But we have so many kids participating, 682 in the three grades. That is a duplicated number. Some are in more than one performing group, but it's still marvelous to see that many playing an instrument or singing. Our athletics are, is very high with participation again this year with 248 seventh and eighth graders playing a fall sport. And by the end of the school year, of course, many students have, have experienced a little bit of the athletic competition after school, with a number of students playing up at the high school as well. Some things to remember, we did go through our orientation with all the students by grade level, talked about what it means to be a middle schooler in Brighton, and really talked a lot about the DAS and the regulations around that so that we can expect, and we do see good behavior on a regular basis, and intervene if, if there's something we need to intervene for. We practice all our emergency response drills already. I've begun sending our weekly e-news out. The parents should be looking for that each Friday for the latest events and upcoming events and any other information that we want to share. And our morning show, of course, is every morning. Zach O'Neil does a great job with our students who run the show and announce, and that show is archived on our website so parents can watch it off-hours. A lot of upcoming events, especially exciting is our outdoor education program for the sixth graders. We leave with our first group Thursday this week, then we have two more trips next week. Of course, the schools are closed. We come back for school pictures on the third and fourth, and those will be taken during physical education class and right in the small gym at the middle school. And we've got just a lot of breaks in the action before we hit the ground again in October. And that's about it for the middle school.
Thank you very much, Rob.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your leadership with your construction ongoing over there and your new cafeteria.
It's going really well, and, and Dave Luce has really helped everybody every step of the way, too, just like the other buildings. The head custodians are, are worth their weight in gold. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. And finally, tonight, Brighton High School, Tom Hall.
So, year five of Link Crew, our, our team of upperclassmen, juniors and seniors who were trained over the summer, actually starting in May, then in the summer, and they'll be meeting with our freshmen throughout the entire fall semester, right up through, you know, first part of January, taking them through a curriculum that we've mapped out that's been revised every single summer, and just really excited about welcoming our new incoming freshmen, largest class, as you know. This is one of the biggest classes coming through in addition to the eighth-grade group right now. So, we have about 335 freshmen that have joined us, and there's one of the upperclassmen on the left and a freshman on the opening day with Link, getting them to activities with one another, get to know each other activities, and just welcoming them and making them feel a little better for that first day that they're going to start. For all of our transfer students, Rob kind of mentioned, we do very similar things. We have every single transfer student assigned to our Brighton Support Center with Katie Massey. She works with them for at least five weeks, and then we determine after we get together with our RTI teams, if they need more support, we can let them go, or maybe some other intervention. So, she really gets to know them one-on-one. We also sign a faculty member to each new student, and we have a protocol that we use to make phone calls home. This year, we have our PTSA liaison that we're really excited about sharing, Daphne Cohen. We're giving her, them all the information to call her if they have questions, and we're hoping to have at least two to three actual one-to-one meetings with the student in addition to making phone calls home in the fall and in the spring. So, very excited about that. We also have our staff picture. We took it in the gym this year so that we wouldn't have to hear the complaints so much about getting back to their rooms to get ready and start. So, we jumped in the gym and actually worked out really well, so we'll be blowing that up and getting it started. We're doing very similar things in that first opening week. We just finished up all our class meetings. We had structured flex time. There was a video that they watched, two different videos on opening week, and then I reviewed personally all of this information. One of the big things we're doing this year is, you know, checking our language in the hallways and around the school, in addition to really hammering on attendance and the importance of attending school, in addition to all the other things we do with social media. Can't stand social media anymore, but it's there for us to live with forever and ever, and we're just trying to get them to be more, you know, to think more clearly and use that self-control. It's a huge one for social media, as I know you know very well. Safety and security. Yes. So, our motto at school, opening every class, I kind of tell them, and it seems to get a little better when they, they start to be seniors about when I say, you know, someday you might move back to Brighton, and you might have kids attend the high school, and the freshmen are like, eh, what? That's horrible. The seniors are like, yeah, maybe, you know, and some want to just get out. But, you know, then you see so many people return to Brighton, more than they probably do in many other communities, and once you want your high school to have that same, you know, theme and send your kid to a school that's like that. And, you know, we always have conflicts, but we can get through it and resolve them. I'm really excited this year. We're, we have more members in our culture, climate, student leadership team. We're actually joining forces with our professional learning team, which are the teacher leaders, in addition to adding parents to this group. We're reviewing our surveys from the spring. We started this process in the summer, our culture, climate survey. We're looking at the U3 survey, and how can we make Brighton High School have a better, more positive climate, looking at, you know, from everything from the bathrooms and doing, you know, making sure that they're being attended to on a daily basis, all the way to why are kids choosing to do certain activities that, you know, may in the end, like vaping, you know? We've been hammering that for a long time, but using the students to help me fight that battle. And what are some positive things we can do in the school is recognition things that kids will go for in a high school level. We haven't really done that a lot, so I'm really excited working with this very diverse group and the ideas that they have. Open house, we've already gone through open house for the first time ever. We had a community health fair, and I would say, from talking to the parents who attended, there were groups, we had close to 20 agencies from all over Monroe County, and we had our own Lance Mitchell and Kristin Halli, or Kristin Hawey, talking to parents and setting up, we'll be doing this for our, or my first meet the principal meeting, just to share some of the latest, I guess, gadgets that kids may use to hide their, their unmentionables, I guess, things that they might bring into school and hide away from their parents, and, you know, it was a great backpack display, and for any parent, if you have a teenager, this is a good thing for you just to see. And apparently, at the college level, they're actually putting parents through these sort of presentations with parents on some of this drug paraphernalia and places where kids can hide these things and what to look for. So, but the whole, it was well-attended, and parents could come down when they had a free period and walk around, and, you know, it was, it was a great night. We also have our three dogs back in full force, Possum, Lily, and Atticus, and we're hopefully adding a fourth that will join the high school this year, yet to be determined, but they're doing great, having a good year so far. They're excited to come back to school. And so, she collapsed in the library. I had her at one point, and then it just kind of was a magnet for kids to come over and start petting. And the office, Lily with kids in the counseling center, and then after open house, Atticus jumping at me and just giving us a lot of love. So, it's good for everybody, administrators, principals, and the kids. Homecoming 2019 in the books already. Can you believe it? Had a great weekend. The floats were fantastic. Kids had a lot of fun. We had about 150 kids attend the dance. And, you know, overall, for, is the rush that had to happen, kids made it happen, and now they're off and running. I love that picture because he doesn't like his picture taken, and I asked Sparky the dog to go over next to John, and I'll use that against him in the future. So, John, if you're out there watching, there you are, on TV for thousands of people to see. All right. So, college application Mondays continue. Our counselors started about four years ago, this college Monday process from 3:00 to 6:00 PM every Monday in the computer labs. Now, through the end of December, just to be there is two counselors on duty just to help kids and parents. If parents want to stop by from 3:00 to 6:00, they're welcome to come and answer, ask their questions. Counselors will be there to help them the entire time. Club Expo, we're hoping all kids will be involved in some activity, especially the freshmen. That'll be happening in the gym at the end of September. PSAT for all juniors is coming up. It will be no flex day. We're probably one of the only schools, public high schools, you know, thanks to Kevin with that push, several years back, to give the PSAT to all of our juniors, and I don't, I don't know of any other school that's doing it, public school, that's doing it on that Wednesday during the day. And, you know, we get 95% of our kids to take the PSAT, and it's definitely a plus for us, so, thank you, Dr. McGowan, for the pushback then. But here we go. We're focusing, there's several areas this year that you, you know, we talked about this summer, but the, in terms of blueprint, mental health and wellness, diversity, inequity, number four in the blueprint, what we're doing, restorative practices across the district, and we're right into the homework conversation, similar to curriculum council, more to come in that during the year. Lots of activities coming up at the high school as well. 12th grade parent night is the end of the night, big one to, or at the end of the month, big one for parents to come to in our PTSA meeting, noon and 7:00 on the 24th. We'll see then. Any questions?
Looks good, Tom. Thank you. And again, to you and, you know, your building with the auditorium, the main focus, but construction all over and...
I hope they have some pictures to show, but not allowed in there just yet.
Yeah, that's right. Nobody can go near there, and it's going to be magnificent when it's done. But again, we appreciate your leadership and everybody making it work on an everyday basis for now, so, thank you so much. And, you know, you mentioned homecoming. I guess I do want to remind folks, you know, what a great event for the community. You mentioned it being over and done, and it's hard to believe, but, you know, when the schedule comes out, there's only so many days, and what works for all of our partners. So, it ended up being that first Saturday that we were back at school, but it was a beautiful weather period. The floats were fantastic considering that it was right when school opened, and it was a great event, a great community event again. The crowd of families with young children congregating at 12 corners when we... And dogs. There were more dogs than ever before in the parade, around the parade, and, and they're not all therapy dogs, but some may be working toward that. It was just a great event, and when we come around that corner and we're marching in the parade, as lengthy as it is, it is always great to see all the kids running around and having a great time. So, we do want to thank Nelson, certainly in the Chamber of Commerce, for their leadership, but the town of Brighton, the Brighton Police Department, the Fire Department, the Highway Department, all of our first responders that just make it work. It's just a great community event, and it was, it was a wonderful day. It was really a wonderful week of events, so we want to make sure we thank all those folks again, so. Then, moving along, we have another couple of items here. May we have a motion, please, to approve a transportation contract for a specific individual?
Second.
Moved by Adrian, seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We do have tonight, two different policies that are here for second read. First of all, please, a motion for approval and acceptance, then approval and policy 7110, students, comprehensive student attendance policy. Moved by Marv and seconded by Jolene. You recall this had come to us previously. We did approve the first read. It has to do with, it's a full comprehensive, it's a full comprehensive plan, so it covers all student attendance issues. It's really was originally written and rewritten, revised and amended to handle chronic absenteeism and the way that that's data recorded to the state. So, I don't have anything further on that. Does anyone else have anything further, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And with the approval, second read, that then that becomes formal and part of our, will be inserted into our policy manual. Second policy this evening, a motion, please, for approval, second read, policy 7511, again, a student policy with regard to immunization of students.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Christina. Again, we've talked about this previously. Much has been written, much in the media. This is the second, a second read. This is the approval of the changes that have been made to the immunization of students' policy by the state, and this is, codifies everything that is already in place by law into our policy. So, we just needed to update and amend our policy to cover that. And before, Dr. McGowan, would you like to provide any further information on...
Just being compliant with the law.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, whatever perspectives there may be on the issue, it's entirely about compliance with a very clear law that requires all children to be immunized unless there's an immune system issue, and that is certified by their doctor, and then work with our school physician to approve that, and our school physician's working with families who are on any catch-up schedules, et cetera, very directly. And we're, we're being completely compliant with the law and doing nothing more than following what the law is telling us that we have to do, which is our duty.
Yeah, and, and you're absolutely right, and I do remind anybody who may be watching or that sees us later, we're at the cusp right now of a deadline, so there will be media attention, again, paid to this. And I remind folks that the law is very crystal clear. The law is the law. School districts, if they don't fully comply and allow students to attend, who are not